Next is our audit report. So Ms. Minnick?
Very good. Trustees, you know, as Thanksgiving approaches, you know what time of year this is, and that is time for the annual audit. While our auditors and Ms. Minnick are coming, and I moved one chair, guys, but you might want to move a couple others. While they're coming, I want to thank the members of our Finance Committee, Chair Ward Schmidt, and Trustee Bessket for their diligent work on our monthly financial committee work. Trustees, as you know, they're among the hardest working committee that we have because they meet every month, and several other trustees have also served on the Finance Committee. Trustee Carol Harrell has fair to significant experience there as well. We're going to share, I'm going to share a brief introduction. I appreciated the public commentary regarding the audit this evening, and we've done a lot of work. We're not waiting until now to begin the work. We've been doing this work throughout 2223 and throughout this calendar year 2023. What you will see this evening, trustees and community, is the outcome of the 2023 audit completed by Plant Moran, our independent audit professionals, presents a clean, unmodified opinion on the audited Financial Statements and Federal Programs Audit for this year ending June 30, 2023. We take very seriously our responsibility to be good, strong, careful stewards of the tax dollars and the investment of our community and children. And I want to give a big recognition and gratitude to Ms. Jill Minnick, Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations, and to our AAPS Finance Team. Trustees, you can see them back here. Joining us this evening, Darcy Francourt, who is the lead for this audit, and our team, Casey Zaski, Lynda Newton, and Don McGee. Thank you so much for your work. Not every district can say what's on that first slide, and I'm grateful that in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, we can. The audit outcomes, I know this is a spoiler alert, but we want to get right away to what our bottom line is. This audit report presents a fund equity balance of just over 4%. It is very precisely, very closely in line with our year-long discussions with the projections presented in the budget approved by the Board of Education in the spring of 2023. During this year, we have prioritized exactly what we heard from our community again and again. Thousands of responses, both on in-person meetings and through survey and thought exchange tools. Our community has asked for about four things again and again. Number one, equality staff. Number two, safety and security. Number three, academic enhancements to ensure that our students are learning and growing each day. And then, as you'll hear a little bit later, just a tremendous focus on well-being, well-being of students and of staff. So during this budget year, the board has been very clear-eyed that we prioritize the recruitment and the retention of quality staff this year in order to remain competitive and to ensure that we could attract and keep our top-performing staff. We're currently in the process, and we were proud in the spring to have achieved six successful employee agreements that were very important to quality staff. Thirdly, we've been about the process throughout the year. Trustees, you've been briefed regularly on this work to look at every single position, role, responsibility to ensure that we are aligning the budget. And when we talk about the alignment of the budget, I want to go into specifics of what we have been doing and will continue to do throughout this school year. We've been intentional in our actions. We're committed to prioritize our quality staff. In addition, really it is in upholding what we've heard again and again from our community. So when we think about alignment, there are really two sides of that on the next slide, and that is the alignment of the patterns of need. The public commentary raised up this evening that there are different areas of higher levels of need that have emerged in our system. So when we think about aligning the budget, we're looking at classrooms and schools to see what is the need? What are the needs for advancing student growth and learning? What are the needs to address well-being, social, emotional learning, and mental health? And then, of course, always, safety and security. In addition to differing and emergent patterns of need across our organization, we also have evolving patterns of funding. Those who are just those kinds of folks to watch these things understand that not all of our resources are itemized in per pupil funding anymore. We have, with the governor's work on weighted funding, it has happened, oh, really, over the last three years, trustees, that more and more of our funding is coming through categorical grants. So while we're reviewing all of the needs, we're also having to work to put together this puzzle of what are the categories of special grants? What are the rules and guidelines around applying for those? And what are the expectations around how they will be funded? So this effort of alignment has been going on last year and this year, really to look at a new way of funding. We very much support Governor Whitmer's weighted funding approach, meaning that students who need more funding to be educated well receive that. That generally is helpful to the Ann Arbor Public Schools, but it also makes the work of our finance team a little bit more like a puzzle as they put together all the pieces and parts of each of the categories. We are still learning, trustees, of categorical grants for this year even now. So the puzzle continues. So the bottom line, trustees, on all of this is that, as we have discussed and we've talked about throughout our 2023 budget discussions, we planned ahead to prioritize staff. For years, we heard from our staff, put that priority in ahead of passing the budget. So trustees, we've done that, and I believe you all will continue to make that decision. It's a core value. And then, once we've done that, we have to work to align the resources with the needs, and we are also busy addressing operational realities. You can't scan a Google alert without seeing some of the operational needs in districts across the country, bus drivers, and infrastructure, as well as social, emotional needs. There's a lot of need that we're facing at this time, as we all know. Now, folks will ask, and they have every right and reason to ask, specifically, what does all of that mean? So on the next slide, trustees, you've been hearing about this ongoing. The Finance Committee has heard probably far more than they would like on this kind of work, but I want to be specific. We have always traditionally aligned staffing to enrollment after or around the return to school and county. So that work continues. That's very traditional work. But we are also now aligning service and support to ensure that people and programs and services are aligned to need where they need to be. And trustees, the stories that you hear of the escalated need need to be matched with additional staff and support into building. So that's part of the alignment. We also are in-depth reviewing each position, especially at the point of posting of positions. So trustees, we do that every week on our team. A few months ago, I brought in all of Exec Leadership Team because of our changes that are coming. They've all been together weekly, doing this work together. They do this work very well. We do that ad attrition so that no one loses a job. We are doing that work. This work will continue as we align our post-pandemic structures, needs, and operations. We will be, we continue to evaluate every single item that was added during the three pandemic years. A lot of those items immediately went off of the ledger, but there are some that remain. So I want you to know that is another area of work. Again, we've said it a lot, attention to alignment of need and funding. In case folks think that even the specific steps aren't enough, I brought forward two examples. One is our A2 Virtual Elementary. We really appreciate our A2 Virtual Team and all the work that they did. They have done and continue to do. But as elementary enrollment has declined, trustees, as you're aware, we've reduced that FTE. And so that FTE is well-suited to the current enrollment. We were no longer able to keep additional staff there, but we will make adjustments as we see the enrollment throughout the year. Another example, and we continue to work on this. Trustees, you know that our substitute cost, just during the last two and a half to three years, from 3.5 million in 2019 to right at 8 million in 2022, 23. That is a dramatic cost driver. We continue to monitor that. Our team receives an update every single school day morning around 6:30, 7:00 a.m. We monitor that by the day. Trustees, not in any way. We want our people to be healthy. We want them to use their leave days when they need to, to stay healthy, to be healthy. But we also want to be sure that we're being as efficient and effective as possible. So as discussed, the budget alignment work this fall and winter, we've been on it all year since 2223. This is our second year of this work. But as discussed, this work is necessary to restore the APS to a 6% fund equity balance in spring of 2024. Trustees, you have seen the list of areas that we're working in, and we will meet that goal. We will continue to monitor and report to you all, as we do every month, so that you know that we are meeting our goal of being back to that 6%. And then, of course, under the board's leadership, if the trustees, if it works out, we will continue to grow from there, but a minimum of the 6%. So this effective alignment, trustees, there are only two kinds of school districts right now, those who are doing the alignment work and those who will continue to struggle. So we are taking care of that business now so that we will be properly aligned to move forward from here. So on the next slide, you'll see actually what that projection looks like. We are hitting the 4.1% with just under 13 million in fund equity. That is not where we want to stay, but it is within 0.1% of where we projected because we knew our priority last spring. So we will return to that 6.2 million and then move forward from that point. And notice that the early warning status is triggered on the second year of a district being below 5% fund equity. So we absolutely are laser-focused on our work. Trustees, as the auditors are coming, I do want to reassure the trustees and our community that our executive team has been on this work every week in extreme detail. So I want you to know the table has been set for this work to continue to be productive. We're not leaving this in the hands of, we are only leaving this in the hands of folks who are very knowledgeable and know exactly the steps that we are taking. And at this time, it is our great honor to introduce our Plant Moran auditors and Ms. Minnick. And Ms. Minnick, if you'll come on down and do the proper introductions. And I just want to congratulate you and your team again on a clean and unmodified opinion audit.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Swift, for that introduction. Good evening, trustees and community. I do appreciate that introduction very much, and I appreciate the work of our audit team and, in particular, our finance team. Without you, this would not have occurred. So with that out, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Chambers, our partner in charge of our audit with Plant Moran, and Corey Reinhardt, our senior manager, the one who led the audit day-to-day. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for your annual presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education for having us here tonight as part of your agenda to present the results of your June 30, 2023 audit. I want to echo the commentary that's already been made in terms of thanking Ms. Minnick and the finance team, who I know part of you are here tonight, for all the efforts in preparing for and helping us execute on the audit. It is very much appreciated. It takes a lot of work, but we appreciate their responsiveness and the diligence in getting the process moving forward. Before we move into the overview of the financial results, I did want to discuss with you the deliverables that you've received in your packets related to the audit. You should have received three items: the basic financial statements, which is labeled "financial report", the federal programs audit, and the letter entitled "Report to the Board of Education". All school districts in Michigan are required to have an audit required by state law. As a result of our audit work, as was previously mentioned as well, we have rendered an unmodified opinion on both the financial statement and federal awards reports. This is the highest form of assurance that we as auditors can provide to indicate that the financial information is free of material misstatement. As part of our audit procedures, the district was subjected to bond and sinking fund compliance testing as well, and our audit procedures include an evaluation of those requirements. We did not identify any compliance issues with the costs that we selected for testing. Specifically related to the audit of the federal programs, we had no findings or question costs. As part of the federal programs audit, we do select specific programs to be tested annually based on what the requirements are in the audit guidelines. The Child Nutrition Cluster Program was selected for testing and was found to be in compliance with federal regulations. So we have performed the audit of the district's financial statements in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and in accordance with government auditing standards. The district, and more specifically, the Finance Department, is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with the accounting principles. The auditor's responsibility is to render an opinion on those financial statements. As part of preparing for the audit, we perform a thorough evaluation as well of independence to ensure that there are no threats that would impair our independence as your auditors. This is something we take seriously and monitor throughout the year in order to ensure that objectivity is maintained. As part of the deliverables that I mentioned you received, one was called "The Report to the Board of Education". Here in this letter, we provide a qualitative summary of the results of the audit that accompanies the audit opinions that I mentioned previously. As part of that letter, there are several key areas outlined, including the fact that we tell you there was no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There were no disagreements with administration. There were no audit adjustments identified. And there were no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and, as I mentioned, no findings or question costs. So the primary focus of the graph presentation that we have focuses on the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the district. However, before we get into that, we did want to highlight the significance of the capital improvements program as well as this is contributing to the overall advancements in the infrastructure of the district. And while these costs aren't reflected in the general fund, it is an important component when looking at the overall financial picture. So in the current year, there was $88.2 million in current-year capital investments from outstanding bond issues, including $82.1 million from the 2019 bond program and the balance of the funds from the 2018 technology and 2015 building and site bonds. In addition, the sinking fund millage continues to be a critical element to the overall capital repair needs of the district with about $9.7 million in the current year with investments from this fund. Moving forward, there are also certain challenges to mention for the district to continue to be mindful of. First, the impact of the pandemic on all facets of the district, from learning challenges to additional costs incurred to staff and equipped buildings. Second, as has already been discussed, the alignment of staff focused on mental health and well-being efforts. Additionally, continuing to balance the investments you're making in staff and services that you would like to offer while maintaining that overall fiscal responsibility working within the current funding structure that's provided to districts in the state of Michigan. And finally, the impact of the one-time grant funding that we've seen in the prior years that is not part of your permanent funding structure going forward is also something that you have to continue to be mindful of. So at this time, we will start to get into the financial information. I'm going to turn it over to Corey, and she'll lead us through that.
Thanks, Jennifer. All right, like Jennifer said, we're going to start getting into some of the numbers. So this first slide shows the general fund revenue and expenditures budget to actual. So it shows the original approved budget from June 2022, which is shown in teal, the amended June 23 budget that is shown in orange, and then the actual results, which are shown in gold. And one thing to mention and point out is that the original budget that was approved in June of 2022 was done so before the state budget was adopted, which is what determines the amount of state funding. So one thing we did want to point out is that these numbers include additional funding that is received from the state of Michigan for the retirement system. This is money that is required to be paid directly to the retirement system, so it's effectively a pass-through. For the current year, this amounted to 39 million, and it's referred to as Section 147(c) funding. This amount is recorded as both revenue and expenditures, and we've noted that in this slide here. So looking on the left-hand side of the graph, this shows the general fund revenue. The district originally budgeted about 278 million in revenue. The final amended budget was for 305 million, and then actual revenue came in at about 310 million. As noted on the bar chart, the actual revenue excluding that $39 million amount pass-through that I mentioned would be 271.3 million. And the reason that we call this out is if the state were to cease providing that 147(c) funding, the expenditures for the retirement system would still remain. Now, looking on the right-hand side of the graph, this focuses on general fund expenditures. The original budget was for 282 million, then increased to about 311 million in the amended budget. And then, actual expenditures came in at about 317 million, so just slightly higher than planned. And again, wanted to point out that this final amount also includes that 39 million of Section 173 funds. And without that amount, the total expenditures would have been 278.3 million. And this just shows some high-level numbers for revenues and expenditures, but we'll get into details of both here in a little bit. This next slide continues to focus on general fund budget versus actual results, and it examines the impact that had on expected versus actual fund balance. So on the left-hand side, we show a timeline starting with the fund balance as of June 30, 2022. It shows the revenue and expenditures, which gets us to the amount of expenditures over revenue. And then ultimately, we get to the fund balance as of June 30, 2023. Along the top, the columns present the final amended budget for 2023, the actual results, and then the difference between the two, which is shown in the variance column. The graph reflects that the final amended budget planned to utilize about 6.6 million of fund balance. The actual utilization of fund balance came in at about 6.8 million. And one thing we did want to point out is, within the variance column, you can see there are some large-looking variances. However, if you do look at them as a percentage of the budget, they're actually very small percentages. And in relative terms, if the budget were $100, that would mean that revenue is off $1.65, and expenditures would be off $1.79. And then included at the bottom of this slide are a couple of metrics that are helpful when looking at fund balance and putting it into perspective. So the first two are fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and fund balance as a percentage of revenue, both of which we'll get into detail in the upcoming slides. And then finally, at the bottom, we have a figure that equates fund balance to days of operations. So this metric is helpful when looking at large dollars. So you know, the fund balance of 12.9 million appears large, but when you look at it compared to average operating costs per day, if there ceased to be any revenue, the school district could fund operations for 15 days. And the reason why we point this out is just to focus on the importance of cash flow management, particularly in the two months during the year that state aid is not received. Moving along, this next slide shows a historical look at the general fund fund balance over the last several years, and it really gives a good perspective on how things have changed over time. So as you can see, the fund balance has increased and decreased over the years, and it rests at about 12.8, 12.9 million at June 30, 2023. And while that amount is higher than the amount in 2024, it's still important to continue to monitor fund balance as you look forward into the future with the focus on fiscal stability and sustainability. Then, moving along to the next slide. So this slide continues to look at the fund balance over the 10-year horizon. It's very similar to the slide that Dr. Swift showed not too long ago. And this slide presents the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures over this time horizon. So the board's policy is to have this percentage be between 6% and 15%, which we've noted on the slide in the red boxes. And as you can see, over the recent years, this measure has been relatively stable between 6.7 and 8.2. However, it has declined to the 4.1% at June 2023. And this is June 30, 2023, and this was the result of the utilization of fund balance that occurred in the current year. So this next slide continues to focus on the fund balance, and it gives some additional context related to fund balance and certain indicators that are helpful when evaluating the fund balance. And this slide utilizes 2023 revenue and expenditures of the district to point out certain fund balance levels, to point out what fund balance levels would need to be under different indicators. So we have four primary data points here. The first, which is in the orange bar, indicates the actual June 30, 2023 fund balance, which again is that 12.9 million. The next, or as you can see, this is below the yellow bar, which represents that early warning trigger threshold. And a number of years ago, the state implemented what is called the early warning legislation, and this is something where, when districts have less than 5% of revenue or when fund balance is less than 5% of revenue for two consecutive years, that district would be subjected to heavy scrutiny by the state, including having to submit additional reports. subjected to heavy scrutiny by the state, including having to submit additional reports and documentation at a much higher level than that is normally required. And so the fund balance for 2023 was below that 5%, but again, that is not triggered unless it's for two consecutive years. And then the third level, which is in green, shows what the fund balance would need to be at in order to reach a 15% fund balance level, which is a target that certain state associations such as MSBO recommend fund balance to be. And then finally, in blue, the fourth level shows what the fund balance would need to be in order for the district to be consistent with the statewide average. The statewide average that we have shown here is based off of 2022 data, as this is the latest data available, and that percentage for statewide districts was about 20%. So this next slide shows the operating results of the general fund, so revenues less expenditures for the last 10 years. And this slide shows the change in each of those given years, but it does not show cumulative data. And there's a lot going on in this slide, but the big takeaway is that the fund balance has experienced increases and decreases over this time horizon. And in two of the previous seven years, there have been significant one-time funding sources and uses that have played a role in the changes in the fund balance. So we have added notes at the bottom of this slide that help describe what those one-time items are. And for the timeframe of 2016 and 2017, in the absence of these one-time items, the results would have been close to a break-even position or no significant change to fund balance. And in 2018, the one-time funding sources helped offset investments made in staff and programs to minimize the amount of fund balance that was ultimately utilized. Next, we're going to look at some of the specifics of revenue and expenditures for the year. So this slide here shows the general fund revenue for the year ended June 30th, 2023. So total revenue amounted to about 310 million. The largest source of general fund revenue, which is shown in the teal, relates to the foundation allowance, which made up about 57% of general fund revenue. And as I'm sure you're aware, that foundation allowance revenue is really driven by two key components. The first being enrollment, which is something that you do have influence over with your ability to attract and retrain students. And then the second key piece of that equation is the state allocation of the foundation allowance. So that's the per pupil amount, which you have no direct control over. And comparing this amount to last year, it made up about 58%, so very comparable year over year. And then moving counterclockwise around this chart, the next largest source of revenue in the blue, coming in at about 18%, is revenue that's received from sources such as state categorical revenues, federal grants, special education funding received from the state, and other local revenue. Next, in yellow, and coming in at about 13% of total revenue, is that pass-through funding that I mentioned earlier, so the 147(c) funding that again comes from the state and then is remitted directly back to the state for contributions to the statewide mandated retirement system. And then finally, in orange, 12% of the total is received from the county for special All right, so as I mentioned, foundation allowance has really has two key components, first being the enrollment, and then second being that per pupil amount. And so this slide gives a historical look on that per pupil amount. And as you can see, in the early years on the graph, when the significant per pupil funding was enacted, since then, increases in funding were nominal for a period of time. And it's not been until recent years where the foundation allowance increases were more substantial for districts. And looking into the current fiscal year, so fiscal year 23, 24, that per pupil amount is $10,609 per student, as you can see on the far right of this graph. So this slide shows the other piece of that equation, so student enrollment. And again, this directly drives that foundation allowance revenue that is received by the district. And this slide shows the enrollment based on the fall FDE count each year. As you can see, enrollment changes were relatively consistent from 2014, increasing through about 2019, and then decreased in 2020 through 2023. And the one thing just to point out here is that these figures presented represent all students for which Ann Arbor received the foundation allowance and are included in the counts which are audited by the ISD. And now I'll turn it back over to Jennifer, who's going to cover some information on general fund expenditures.
So the slide that we have presented here now transitions us over to general fund expenditures broken down by the type of expenditure. Total expenditures for the general fund this year approximated 317.3 million. Of that total, the combined salaries benefits in that retirement pass-through funding that we've mentioned a few times represents 259 million, meaning approximately 82% is expended on salaries and benefits for district employees. And as a reminder, again, that 39 million MIPSers pass-through are the amounts received in revenue by the state, which Cory pointed out, and then immediately sent back to the retirement system once received. If you look at the gold section of the pie chart, at 15%, this relates to purchase services, so ABM, Durham, edge of staff, also technology, transportation, maintenance, custodial. The majority of this 47 million is human resources, people-type costs, substitute teachers, custodial staff, and bus drivers. And then at about 3%, this represents supplies, materials, and various utility costs as So continuing to move on, looking at general fund expenditures, you can advance it one. Here, we took that portion that I mentioned, the 259 million that represents salaries and benefits, and presented it here on the pie chart so that we could look further at really the different components of salaries and benefits. So first, salaries and wages comprises about 143 million, or 55%. That's what's represented in teal, which is as expected to be the majority of the overall expenditures in this grouping. Additionally, total contributions to the MIPSers system represents about 78.4 million, and healthcare-related costs also represents about 25 million. And we've got some additional detail on retirement and health insurance costs in a few slides. Continuing to move forward, looking at the general fund salaries and benefits again, that same pool is on the previous slide, but here we're looking at salaries and benefits from a functional level. So where within the district are the salaries and benefits being incurred? So within this grouping, the most significant area of the costs is within instruction and instructional support at 88%. That's what's represented in teal. And then school administration at 6% represented in the orange piece of the pie. And combined, if you were to add those two together, that represents about 94%, which is school-based salaries and benefits. So the largest component of the district salaries and benefit costs are going directly into, you know, the student experience in the schools. Approximately 6% also relates to school-building leadership, 2% relates to general district leadership, and about 1% represents operations and maintenance. As I mentioned, we'll take a little bit deeper look into the retirement costs associated with the MIPSers system. So this graph represents an eight-year trend of the MIPSers expense for the district. And as a reminder, because the district has collective bargaining agreements and based on how the state of Michigan is structured, it is required or mandated that you participate in this system. The district has no input on contribution rates, investments of how the state of Michigan is managing the MIPSers plan, but you are directed on what the annual contribution rate will be. As you can see, this cost has been steadily increasing over the prior eight years. It leveled off slightly in 2020, but it has been increasing again in 2021 through June 30, 2023. Total costs in 2023 do include the $39 million of that MIPSers pass-through, but again, if you didn't receive the revenue associated with that, you would still bear the expense. What we wanted to point out, though, however, you might say, wow, I look at this 23 graph, and it's substantially higher than what it was in the prior year. And a large component, or really the primary driver of that, is what's shaded at the very top, that gold bar. So this is still considered part of that pass-through funding. However, this year, there was a unique component, referred to as 147(c)(2). It was a one-time deposit that districts had. They got the revenue from the state of Michigan, had to contribute it back into the retirement system, but it's not built into the future funding. So it's one time, just for this year. So we call that out, just so you have a sense of from a, you know, looking forward perspective, what your ongoing retirement costs would be. It would really be more consistent with what the teal and the orange bars are, so excluding that gold piece. So now we'll take a look at healthcare, health-related insurance costs, again, looking at an eight-year time horizon. Here, you can see that, for generally speaking, health insurance costs have maintained a good level of stability, although in general, healthcare costs do continue to rise, and it is something to just continue to be mindful of. So now that we've kind of took a look at the financial data recap of the year, we thought we would move forward into just highlighting some key takeaways, what to look for in the future, and next steps for Ann Arbor Public Schools. So first, from a key takeaways perspective, the district continues to operate fiscally responsibly, as evidenced by the clean opinion issued by your auditors. Again, the highest form of assurance that we can provide to you, and through the continual monitoring of financial activity that we observe takes place within the district. The district has also been successful at cost containment and improved efficiencies and focused on strategies that were talked about earlier in the presentation, but this will need to continue to be a focal point in balancing, you know, how you invest resources and meeting those needs to continue to yield the financial results that are targeted for by the board. The board and the administration has continued their commitment to oversee the district for long-term viability, and you've utilized and invested those one-time federal and state funds into health and well-being programs for students, staff, and being able to offer competitive pay. So taking a look at what you should be looking for in the future, so there's a lot of things, a lot of things you have to manage from a financial perspective, and a lot of it has been already talked about throughout the presentation and as well as what Dr. Swift's comments were. But one thing we would continue to monitor is your fund balance levels and just making sure that aligns with the investments and the resources that you have. Continuing to keep an eye on the state economy, as has been mentioned, there's been a significant investment by the current administration into the education system. The state has overall been performing well, but it's important to continue to watch that because a large portion of what comes through and funds the state aid budget is dependent on how well the state of Michigan is doing. So continuing to keep a pulse on that so that you have an idea of where that per pupil funding could go in the future. And again, as we mentioned, there's a huge component of your overall expenditure base that's related to the MIPSers retirement system. The current rate right now is about 45% of salaries and wages. So continuing to keep an eye on that, although, you know, at best, you can influence it just through your efforts to encourage change, the reality is that that system will continue to be a significant expenditure for the district. And at this point, I will turn it back over to Dr. Swift to talk about next steps, and then we can transition into questions.
Thank you so much. We appreciate this excellent work. Thank you. We know that we're able to continue to do our work because of the hard work of our teams and schools serving children every day. We know that that doesn't happen by accident, that it's our team that delivers that Ann Arbor Public Schools difference that causes us to be able to accomplish our critical mission of teaching and learning and to also continue to attract students. Ann Arbor Public Schools is the only school district in the county that is up in enrollment over the previous 10 years. And we can see, we don't have our audited numbers yet, trustees, you'll be looking at those on December 6th, but we can see a real stabilization in our enrollment, down just a hair, it looks like, but really percentage-wise level. And achieving that while dialing that, as you know, trustees, we have dialed back the valve for schools of choice, given the challenges of this very difficult time. So we know that we continue to be successful because of the ongoing support of an Ann Arbor Public Schools community who votes and invests. We know our responsibility to be strong fiscal stewards, and I thank you, trustees, for your work to do and be that, and thank you for the opportunity, and thank you, auditors, for delivering this audit report this evening. Thank you, Madam President and trustees.